Twenty. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So unusual to have a meeting on a midweek night, but Paul, we're ready to go. And if you could start with first item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And believe it or not, on a special meeting, we have another special agenda item added on to the top. So a town clerk, Amy Warfield, is here, and she needs the board to revote our town meeting warrant to reflect a change in the time of town meeting than what was previously posted. So I will turn it over to Amy so she can fill you in on the details.
Amy, before you speak, do we have to have Nick read that process?
That would be good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Nick, could you read your quickly?
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders, he's spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the Town of Burlington Board of Selectment is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and/or review this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BAC Government Cable Access Television, BAC Government Coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9388. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the BAC Government Coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy. Amy, are you out there?
I am.
Okay, so we had to get that done. And now that's finished, Mr. Sagarino already introduced you. So this is Amy Warfield, town clerk.
Hi, Amy. I gave a brief introduction, so I was.
Okay, so yes, basically, because of the continuing changing circumstances with COVID, we have had to reissue the warrant for town meeting to reflect two changes. And the first one is that we will still be meeting on June 10, but we will start meeting at 6:00 P. M. And the second is, is that instead of meeting indoors after our meeting with the Board of Health, we will be using the football field to meet on. We have gone through with the Board of Health, Bill Byer and I, in terms of what we can do for setting up people. We will be setting up rows of chairs that are all six feet apart with alleys that are more than 12 feet wide. We will be bringing in some video capability and some audio and audio capability so people will be able to hear and will be able to see the goings on. And our plan is that we will try to get done what is important and can be done in one night. We are also, Paul and the financial team has already recorded a presentation that is currently been sent to all town meeting members and will shortly be up on the website. I'd be glad to send that all to you, too, if you haven't gotten a copy of it. And what we're trying to tell town meeting members, and also I'm getting out, got out to the department heads, is that we need to get as much information and questions answered ahead of time so that we can make this a smooth operation so that we can get done what business we have to get done in the one evening. So that's what you need to sign. You need to re-sign the warrant, and then it will get mailed out tomorrow to all town meeting members to, again, notify them of the changes.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Any comment from Mr. Sagarino?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional comment other than to reiterate what Amy had said. This is going to be a great year if people can just get us as many questions in advance. Call the departments, ask questions about the warrant articles. I think it, we all do our part. I know everybody here wants to answer the questions. We just want to make this particular town meeting go as smooth as possible this year. So, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we'll start with Mr. Priest. Any, any comments or questions, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Chairman. Amy, any, for folks who might need to park closer to the football field, are we making accommodations for them?
Yes, we're going to try, having had previous discussions with our disability access officer, we can't put apparently temporary handicap signs places, but we are going to try to work with having that, those people that need to park close to the field park, and then we will use the student parking lot for everyone else. And so we will try to work on that. And again, I'm in the process of sending out a lot of emails to town meeting members. That's another, one of the other topics that's on there in terms of to please be considerate, you know, of there are people that that need to have better access. And so we're, we're working on that, yeah.
Okay, great. And are, are we advising folks to bring sunscreen?
Well, we, we were working on trying to, we were thinking about, we'll make them, the thing that we can do is we could, we can have and hand them a bag with snacks in it. So we'll try to have a bottle of water and some different snacks that we will pass out to them. Because yes, we're, it'll be a long night, and we know how much people like refreshments or candy or something like that.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan? Any comments? What?
Amy, what if it rains?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Amy, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
What if it rains?
That is the one plan that if it does rain, we would have to then move it to another night.
Okay, will we have to take another vote?
I think the moderator would be able to make the call at that point.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No question, but I would ask the town clerk if she has a moment after the vote to maybe update us on the town election.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. After working 32 years of football games and graduations, I'm pretty familiar with how the parking goes down there.
Yeah.
There's an area behind, near the, the gate where the buses usually park. That's typically coned off during games, so that can be used for people who need assistance. And then there's a, there's a, the practice field, there's a gate to the practice field that we've traditionally put overflow handicap parking in there.
Okay.
So there's a custodian that would open it, and then you can fit quite a few cars in there, but I would restrict that to those who need assistance.
Is the first area you're talking about, like at the end of the track?
No.
The one to the left as you're looking at the field?
As you're looking at the field from the high school driveway, it's the area between both gates. It's, it's, that's where the buses usually, the school buses usually park for the games.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to take a look at it with you.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, you know, do a walkover with you to just get an idea, because that is something that we need to be, you know, cognizant of and aware and kind of tell those people that although it's not going to be clearly marked as handicap, this is where we expect you to be able to park.
Okay, yeah, you may want to see if the, the chief will put someone out there or get someone from the traffic division to, to assist that night.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Second point is, if you're giving people water and snacks.
Yeah.
You, porta potties?
We are going to step it up from porta potties and use the, what I always equated was to the queen bathrooms. They are a trailer that is brought in. They have men's and women's stalls in them. They have water in them, which is one of the things that the Board of Health said, that we can't have them using Purell as a washing. They need to have soap and water. So these are a trailer item that's brought in, and that's what we're going to be using for bathrooms.
Okay, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't have any comments at this time, Amy, but I would seriously like to thank you for the work you've done on this. I know that you were down at the high school measuring everything, trying to get us to get in that room, but apparently not enough seats, too many people.
Yeah.
At this point, I think we'll just, we'll take a vote on this. Once again, I need a roll call vote. I need a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we change the starting time for the town meeting to 6:00.
Motion by Bob, second by?
Oh, second.
Jimmy? Okay, roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
To be for the location.
Oh, I would add to my motion then, that it would be at the high school field.
Okay, so the second by Jimmy? We good, Amy?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest? Mr. Priest?
I, I think he's having a connection issue, Joe.
Okay. So we'll pass on Mr. Priest. I'm a yes. So it'll be four?
Zero, zero.
Four, zero, zero.
And I've also given to Betty, we need to have a copy of the warrant re-signed. So if, I don't, Betty will reach out to you all about getting it signed.
Great.
Have that official.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, if you want to go over the election real quick before we move on to the next item? Thank you. I believe Mr. Runyon was asking.
Yeah. Any specific questions, Mike, or?
No, just sort of the Reader's Digest version, date, times, and very briefly what precautions you're going to take for those folks voting in person.
Sure. Yeah, basically, the, the date and time are June 6. Polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We currently have about 1,585 mail-in ballots that have been sent out, fulfilled. We have 455 of them back. And for the day of, we will be having, again, counting on the weather, or we'll move it in this part inside, we will have them lined up outside. We will have four people basically helping them to remember what precinct they're in, where they need to go. We will be splitting between the rubber gym and the wooden gym. So precincts one to four will be in the rubber gym. Precincts five to seven will be in the wooden gym. For those who don't have kids or it's been a long time since you had kids, the rubber gym is the one on the right where we usually vote, and the wooden gym is the one on the left. And what will happen is every precinct will have seven stations. So at any one point in time, we won't have more than seven voters in the, in the precinct. And they'll be told to work, work their way through, to stop and wait at their station until the next available station is open. I'm also getting some extra police details that will help us make sure that people are moving through. They won't be allowed to stand around and chat like they usually do. It'll be, you've come to vote, and you need to vote, and then leave. The other thing is, all of the workers will be given masks and gloves. That all of the voters and election workers will be kept six feet apart by tables. And we are hoping that we will keep, we're working hard to keep everybody safe and work them through that. We do have, we will have a lot of, a lot of our regulars have opted to not work this election, so we will be having a lot of new workers. And they all seem anxious and ready to get going, and hopefully it will be as smooth as we normally work out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Anybody else have any questions about the election?
One quick question, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Amy, what about the end of the night, the counts that are collected by the candidates?
They will be, again, we will be using tables to keep those people interested in the votes six feet away. We will read them off like we normally do, and then they will be placed, we're going to have the table there. They will be then, you'll be asked to step back, and we'll place them on the table, tape them down there, so people can kind of eas, more easily get to them. The other thing is, is that while we, we cannot require voters to wear masks, we hardly recommend, and Board of Health hardly recommends, that for your own protection, you wear a mask if you are coming to day of voting.
And for the protection of others?
Yes, yeah, for yourself and for others, yeah.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one quick question, Amy. Groups like the veterans in the food pantry, will they still be allowed to be there that day?
No, I'm afraid not. They can't be there.
Okay.
So that would be a plug. If you want to give to the food pantry, make sure you do it through their website.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So at this point, Paul?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Paul, we'll move right along to the next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board and everyone else in town's aware, Commonwealth Massachusetts has started the process of reopening the state. And tonight, we have a bunch of folks in our room here tonight who worked on a, a plan for, for the town to welcome back our businesses and, and help them in any way possible to reopen. I'd like to thank all the parties that were involved in this project. Melissa Tentaklis, the Economic Development Director, Kristin Kazner, our Planning Director, Andy Ungerson, our Building Commissioner, Susan Lummonello from our Board of Health, the Chairman of the Planning Board, Barbara LaRue, and our own Chairman, Joe Morandi, also worked on this. So with that, I will turn it over to Melissa so she can give you the details of what we hope to accomplish with this action tonight.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everyone. So tonight on the agenda item is really a joint letter of support. This letter of support is really kind of a uniting letter to kind of share, number one, our kind of compassion for the upheaval and the upendedness of what COVID's done for our business community. And then beyond that, it's really trying to also inspire the businesses and encourage their kind of creativity to kind of come to the town as they figure out how to best reopen, all while still in compliance with the state safety guidelines and on social distancing and, you know, best public health practices. So when we were talking about how the reopening was going to go, a lot of the conversations around in the business community said, well, you know, we're going to have to think of things differently, how we're going to address that. So Barbara, Joe, Paul, Kristin, and Rip Parker from the chamber came together and had this discussion more on a, you know, kind of a high level, not into the details of approval, but more like, are we together in supporting a little bit more of a creative approach, if you will, if someone wanted to do some outdoor seating, or are we okay with, you know, the concept of a pickup retail? We don't know what the ideas are totally, but we wanted to say as the elected body that, or bodies, that we're trying to support them. So Barbara had an idea of a joint letter. And what, you know, Kristin and I were able to do was kind of draft that. The Planning Board, I know Barbara's there, approved it last week. And Barbara, I don't know if you want to say anything more on that, but that's really what we're trying to review now and hope to approve this evening.
Hi, everybody. Barbara here. I don't really have a lot to add. I hope you've all had a chance to look over the letter. And of course, we're into your input. It's pretty, like, important, and also in businesses to reach out to us. Their ideas are, they think they can open their businesses. So I hope you've had a chance to look it over, and you'll feel comfortable signing it, I hope.
Thanks, Barbara. And just to, you know, add to that, there, from, you know, the permitting piece, you know, Andy gets a lot of questions. Susan will obviously get a lot of questions. And what we're trying to also do is kind of funnel it. So with the overarching framework of the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board saying, hey, we do support our businesses on the kind of very technical level, Andy, Kristin, Susan, police, fire, are reviewing, or the intention is to review for kind of a compliance to make sure things are safe as they come through. And I'll just give you a couple examples. We talked about that they're just a little kind of out of the norm. So the, you know, mall had a retail pick-up-and-go request, so they really need to use the parking differently. But when you're using the parking differently, that starts to affect how, you know, the permit or the zoning was initially approved, because the parking requirements go to the use. And then when you start to impinge upon those, it kind of creates some additional problems. So we were looking at how we can make sure it's safe and how it can comply during this time of the state of emergency. So really also wanted to add that this is really a level of support during this state of emergency. This isn't always and forever. The idea is, as long as we're trying to reopen, recover, as we all stand in this kind of state of emergency that was, you know, declared by the governor back in March.
Melissa, Barbara, again, if I could just add a little bit, I agree with everything Melissa said, but I think we should also consider this letter of support really just a first step, because I do think that in order to help businesses open quickly, so that they don't have to come to the Planning Board, each and every one of them looking for permission, we should start working on a list of guidelines or rules, things like, you know, if you are going to have seating in the parking lot, you need to set up protective barriers to make sure that patrons are safe. And there, those are the types of things that Planning Board would be working on, but then there's going to be things that Board of Selectmen would need to work on, such as what would be the hours they're allowed? How would you handle serving of alcohol out in what are normal public spaces? Do we need to have police details when that's happening? So there's a lot to think about. I think this is really just the very first small step, and it's an indication to the business community that we want to work with them and that we want to help them reopen. But I think we need to get to work on some of those guidelines as well, just to avoid future problems.
Well, thank you, everybody. At this point, I'd like to hear from the Selectmen. So we're going to start with Mr. Runyon. Any, any questions on this or comments?
No, no questions, Joe, but a, a quick comment. I, I think this is a great idea. You know, Burlington's had a pretty good reputation over the years of being a, a good place to do business. I think a unified letter from, from the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board will go a long way to reinforce that sense of goodwill here in Burlington. So, yeah, I'm all on board for that.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank Melissa, Barbara, and the whole Planning Board for their efforts in getting the ball rolling on this. Melissa, you used the term creative approach, and I'm thinking, and it may, I may be, you know, this may be a discussion for another day, but could this be an opportunity in conjunction, say, with the, the Chamber Commerce, maybe to find out as businesses reopen, what they need for employees? In other words, their employment needs, and then maybe also have people who are looking for work to sort of somehow get connected with the employers? In other words, again, like you said, creative approach, like almost like a virtual job for, for businesses that need employees. And we know we have people in town who've lost their job, maybe somehow, and Melissa, I don't mean, may throw you into the middle of this, but make someone a conduit for the two, those who have a need and those who need a job. Is that, should we talk a different, a different day about that, or would this be appropriate now?
I could speak to that real quickly. I mean, I think in terms of supporting unemployment or people who have been, you know, kind of had, you know, job dislocation, given COVID, might be more effective as a separate initiative. I think, you know, I have mentioned to Paul that we're exploring a possibility of a grant that's looking at job retraining, actually. It's still kind of in its formation, and if that has legs, we'd like to, you know, bring it to the Board of Selectmen soon. But that might be better fit, like, even if that doesn't pan out in a separate initiative.
Okay, just to get the ball rolling, that's all.
No, it's important. I think I sent out the unemployment stats for Burlington. I think we're at 11.4. I mean, nationwide, we're about at 14%. So, I mean, that's kind of the comparison. So it's, you know, it's a good, it's a good, you know, number, and I think we want to be able to help those people for sure.
All right, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, I had emailed you with this a little while ago, and I apologize it was coming in late. But the, could you help explain the, the wording in bullet two around special, like the special events? What do we mean by special events?
Um, I think most people understand special event, it was, we can't, like, kind of connotated as, you know, large events and big, you know, big spaces. That's not, you know, necessarily what we're trying to say here. Everything that would come through, it might be special because it's different. I think that's what we, we meant by that. And, you know, one thing that's been talked about is could we do, if you're familiar with the concept of open streets, where you close off, you know, maybe a, a street, you know, it's still not, and it's not a street party or a festival, but you're just closing it off to vehicles. You know, that's more of like a temporary closure or a special event. That's how we were trying to define it. It wasn't a large public gathering.
Yes, if I could ask here, Nick, what Melissa was talking about, we, we discussed perhaps street closures, for example, third Ave is perfectly positioned for that because there are so many other points of entry, but also things like sidewalk sales. Remember when, in the past, Macy's has had sidewalk sales where they come out into the parking lot, and they have tents with merchandise in them? And, and that was just for a weekend when they would do that for a big sale. So that might be the type of thing that we would consider a special event as well, something like that.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, as, as long as we know what the definition of special event is, and when someone asks, we have a very clear definition. Could be considered a special event, even though, you know, but otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with it. But I think that, you know, having a joint letter is, is extremely important. I very much like the idea of guidelines. I think guidelines are very tricky right now, given how. I very much like the idea of guidelines. I think guidelines are very tricky right now, given how like the evolution of everything is kind of going. You know, so we should be very cautious about, you know, what type of documentation or guidelines we decide to begin to develop, or whether we just begin to like track certain things and, you know, kind of go with the flow as well. And then just in terms of, you know, these, these temporary approval letters, is there anything to define the, I mean, I know it's but, you know, should we develop any language around this? That says, you know, at a certain point, based on, you know, the governor's, you know, decisions or the planning that, you know, this will then revert back to, you know, regular, you know, or I should say applicable laws?
I think that definitely be in the, Nick, not particularly, it's not really permission to thing per se. It's sort of more of an invitation to engage with us and a letter of support. When it comes to guidelines, part of the guidelines are going to be helping people determine when they need to come to us. So for something like a special event, I imagine they're still probably going to need to come to the Board of Selectmen. You're not going to want people shutting down entire streets to traffic without it coming through the Board of Selectmen because it can have impacts that the individuals that have this idea may not realize. So I don't think these things are going to be happening across the board without coming to the Board of Selectmen or to the planning board, depending on what they want. But we can make some things through the guidelines available to people under certain guidelines. For example, maybe we tell people that they can have more outdoor seating and give them guidelines about how they're allowed to do that and how much they're allowed to do. And things like, I mean, I don't know how the Board of Selectmen feels about restaurants serving alcohol outside in non-traditional locations. That's something that could be in your guidelines when you work on those because restaurants are going to want to be serving alcohol to their customers who might be sitting in the parking lot. I don't know what the legalities are surrounding that.
Right. All right. Thank you both very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan. You're on mute, Bob.
No, no?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry about that. I agree with Barbara and Melissa about the the need for a general letter to say, you know, we're supporting this. And then have the specific meetings and, Mr. Chairman, you and I probably should meet with input from the other members about the alcohol license and the use of alcohol and the things that go along with that, like music. We can't have competing bands wrapped around the mall, everybody playing something all over the mall or on Third Ave. And of course, if we're going to have outside seating, are we going to have outside toilets? So we do need to have conversations wrapped around the use of alcohol during this time. So that would be my issue. And again, thank you, Melissa, Barbara, Joe, and all, everybody involved in getting us to this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. So before I ask for a vote on this, I'd like to hear from Andy. Andy, you've read this, you've heard about it. What are your thoughts? And you're on mute. Andy, you're muted.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Every, every business that opens up, whether it be a restaurant or retail, everyone is going to have or want something different. To come up with some base guidelines, I think we can do, but we're going to have to fly by the seat of our pants on here and giving some approvals. I definitely believe that the group that we have involved, myself, Kristen Kastner with the Planning Board, the Board of Health, Susan Luminal, very, very informative, and she's a great resource for information. And then, of course, with the consult of our Fire Department and the Police Department for traffic control and the safety of our occupants and the buildings themselves. Application is going to be different and it's going to need the group of us to sit down and try to do this as quickly as possible. I don't think one or any two places are going to be requesting similar approvals on this temporary basis. I have been reaching out to several people and telling them that the town is trying to come up with some form of workability so that we can help them open up, but not knowing what the state is going to approve. I really can't give them too much advice. They're also knowing that any approval we give to them will be temporary. And that once we're into either phase three or phase four of our openings here, these approvals could be rescinded and that they would have to go back to the normal approved operation of business.
You all set, Andy?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So just for clarification, that was Andy Youngson, building apartment. So at this point, I could just sit here and rub a lip about what everybody already said. I think we're all in agreement. I think this is for the betterment of the town. There are some kinks we have to work out and we will work them out. So if I could get a vote on this, Mr. Sagorino, do you have any comments on this you'd like to bring up? Or would you like to go right to a vote?
No, I just, I think it's great. It was a great, great teamwork in putting it together. And, you know, I just also like to say that we've gotten a lot of compliments about how well we've kept the town open for business during this crisis. All the boards have still been meeting, planning boards, select board, selectmen, border health, conservation, we're all still meeting online. And we've been complimented numerous times about how helpful we've been to people, even though, you know, we've been more or less shut down ourselves. So I just wanted to thank everybody involved for keeping the town going during this difficult time.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. So, gentlemen, at this point, we need a motion in a second.
Can I ask a question? Yes. Melissa, would you tell us exactly how the wording should be on the motion?
You're on mute, Melissa. Well, I think you would just vote to support the letter that was in your packet. I think that would be an appropriate vote.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bob, second by?
I'll second.
Who was that?
Nick.
Nick.
Okay. Second, can we go to a roll call vote again? Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Randy? Yes. Betty, 500.
Hi, Joe. This is Barbara Leroux again. Thank you all very much for supporting this. I know we're going to be very busy working on the rest of the guidelines or guardrails that we have in place. Do you need me for anything else for this meeting to stay on? Or am I free?
Well, you have to sit around for the rest of the meeting, Barbara.
Okay, I'll just be back soon. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Melissa and Andy, I want to say thank you. Before you take off. All right.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you.
All right, everybody. Thank you. Paul, let's, we'll move right along now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we just wanted to update the board a little bit on the town hall reopening. Again, we had a very dedicated team working on this. Mr. Sanchez, Susan Luminal, Director of Health, Joanne Faust, John D'Nizio, and myself. And they've worked tirelessly over the last month just to try to figure out how we were going to accommodate all of our employees to get back to work safely. And like I say, they worked their tail off. We will be back to full staff on Monday. And I think that our plan is 100% in conformance with CDC guidelines. If you come to the buildings, you'll notice signage. Each employee was provided with wipes. Departments were provided with sanitizer. Department heads have extra masks. Employees are, forget their masks. And we've taken a lot of steps in conformance with CDC guidelines. Every person's workstation has been socially distanced. We were ready for that prior to the shutdown. We moved a lot of folks around. We have folks in the Selectmen's meeting room. We have them at the Grand View. The COA is obviously closed. So I just want to say thank you to that team. They put in a ton of work on this. And we're very thankful for the results. And, you know, we understand that there's probably going to be some kinks on Monday when people, folks come back and, you know, we have Plan Bs in effect for many of these things. And again, the guidelines have sort of been shifting and we're, they've done an unbelievable job keeping up with it. And just to be clear, we'll be bringing the folks back, but we're not at this point ready to open to the public. So we'll still be closed to the public. We'll still be servicing residents through email, through the telephone, by appointment basis. All the departments have developed their own little system for how we handle that. But like I say, it's a, it was a lot of work put in by this team and we're really happy with the end result. In some cases, we're putting up new glass shields at the counters where folks deal with the public the most. So we've taken all the steps that we can and we feel as though we have a really good plan to bring everybody back and have them be safe. But again, it's a trial by error. So we're certainly, I'm sure that when everybody comes back, that, you know, we will be able to react and we will be able to assist employees in feeling comfortable coming back to the offices. So thank you to that team. I don't know if John D'Nizio or John Sanchez wants to add anything to it, but probably not. They're sick of talking about it, but they did a great job and they worked their butts off on it. So I give them all the credit.
See, Mr. D'Nizio has his hand up. That's the Assistant Town Administrator for everyone out there. Go ahead, Mr. D'Nizio.
Paul, I just wanted to add one thing that, along with that reopening task force that Paul had mentioned, we worked hand in hand with the union representatives for both BMEA and DPW who were right along with us during the whole thing. So I just want to recognize them too.
Thank you, John. I don't think we need any comments on this. I think everybody knows what a great job you guys are doing. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Or you want to just move right along to the town hall reopening approval? Paul, why don't you just move right along to town hall opening?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was just an update. And again, I think everybody viewers at home and all the members here in the room tonight are very much aware of, you know, that the positive trend that we're dealing with on the COVID now. We've got some great numbers showing up. As you guys are aware, we received the update from Leahy. The number of cases at Leahy is down magnificently. So I think statewide hospitalizations are down from about 4,000 to less than 2,000 now. So very positive news in the numbers. And we're very hopeful that the trend will continue. And that's pretty much pretty much the update. I don't want to reiterate everything that everybody's already watching on the news, but the numbers seem to be very promising and we're very hopeful to have turned the corner on this.
Thank you, Paul. This is an approval. So we need a?
No, that's not just an update, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. Next one's in approval.
Okay. Go right ahead, sir. Start with the next one.
All right. Hopefully, some good news here for the board. Mr. Sanchez is here to talk about the water ban that the board had to institute a couple of months ago in response to the COVID. We're very thankful for that action. We know it's very difficult action to take and very unpopular amongst our citizens. But again, you know how close we are to the brink on our water system on a regular basis. And we're very thankful that we made it through this far of the COVID crisis. Everybody's healthy. The plants have been running. But as Mr. Sanchez reminds me, we just had a significant water break the other day that, you know, any type of event like this could cause us a big problem on water. And I'll turn it over to John now so he can talk about us going back to sort of the more traditional water ban. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chairman, so due to the positive numbers that we've been seeing and the positive trends with COVID, we felt that we will be comfortable enough to go back to our annual water restrictions that we have, which is just the even odd restrictions. And so with that, I requested the town administrator to modify the restrictions in anticipation of your meeting coming today, which in the past, the Selectmen had granted that authority to the town administrator as long as it's get ratified at the next meeting. So that's what we're doing tonight. So tonight, I'm asking you to just go back to our annual, or regular, if I want to call it, water ban, which is allows the residents to water every other day, depending on the house number, and not between the hours of 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So if you have any questions, I'm here, happy to answer. But that's all we're asking you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Just for the general public, that's Mr. Sanchez, head of DPW. He's a, he's a, he's our go-to man. So, gentlemen, I'll go through the questions. Mr. Tigges, any questions, Mr. Sanchez?
No, no questions. Just glad we got a little bit of good news on this subject.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon.
No questions.
Mr. Priest?
No questions. But I do want to thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I know that this is a little long process, an arduous process, and it's nice to see some movement on it for sure. So thank you.
Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, John, what are we telling people who have got work done along the new roadways that have been put up around town? Where their lawns have been destroyed and now they're going to be doing some repairs in hydro seeding? What do we tell those landowners?
So now, because there's no restrictions that we have in place, we'll allow for watering. And so this should be able to water those according to the schedule that we have. And it should, I mean, it should work. I mean, it works. It works every year. Unfortunately, we have had the same water ban for the last five years. So so we're just going back to that. So that shouldn't be a problem. It'll get hyper seeded and people can water accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll just say thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez, for having us go back to our normal water ban instead of a complete water ban. So at this point, I'll need a motion in a second.
Make the motion.
Motion by Bob, second by? Michael? Okay, we'll go through a roll call vote again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Randy? Yes. 500 Betty. Thank you. John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we just had the standing agenda item to do work on any town meeting articles, but I believe we've addressed those already. So this item is not required tonight.
Thank you very much. Any subcommittee reports? We'll start out with Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, obviously, we're in uncharted territory with the the COVID situation. And I just wanted to thank all of the residents and anyone who does business here in Burlington for their patience during these difficult times. Folks have been really, really good about, you know, the difficulties going about their day-to-day duties. But again, Paul and John and department heads and so forth, I think have done an outstanding job to continue to provide the necessary services to the community. But again, challenging times, and I appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to acknowledge that the Burlington Police Department is going to be the proud owner of a drone come tomorrow, Friday at 1:00, USA-based drone manufacturer Skydio, or is, I think that's how you say it. They've teamed up with the National Public Safety Drone Donation Program and are providing a free drone to the Burlington Police Department. The department sent in an application to Skydio in April, and the top department was chosen to receive one of the drone kits. It's not open to the public, but around 1:00 tomorrow, the presentation will be made. And I just wanted to congratulate. and I just wanted to congratulate them. And it's a tool that will help our department. And again, I like to note that our department is one of the best trained and best equipped department around and we always want to keep one step ahead of everybody else, including the bad guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, I just want to thank Melissa again, you know, for all of her efforts, you know, leading the economic development charge. I think when we, you know, concede to this position and town meeting approved this position, no one foresaw, you know, any of this. And so I think she's just doing a fantastic job, you know, given the circumstances. I really appreciate her eye of the box thinking and her proactive, you know, efforts. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to Chris Hanifin for this past Memorial Day, doing our first virtual Memorial Day with everybody. You know, again, given the circumstances, you know, it's not easy, but, you know, really appreciate everything that he's done there. And then lastly, I just want to make a comment, if I may, is that, you know, I know that, you know, there's about, you know, a month left of school and that, you know, parents are trying to, you know, get through. We also don't know what the summer's going to bring with regards to, you know, childcare and/or, you know, summer camps. So just, you know, as we start to kind of boost the economy, you know, any considerations that business owners can do for employees and kids where possible, obviously is fairly appreciated knowing that there's a lot being juggling at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, with regards to the Fire Department, just passing along that they've been working alongside this committee for the reopening and they were, the topics that they're concerned were restricting fire lanes, curbside pickup, you know, the issue of restricting EMS access or fire access. So they just wanted to let me, let us know that, you know, that's a little bit of a concern of theirs, but it sounds like many of the concerns were addressed by Sergeant Jerry McJenna from the Police Department. And also, Fire Prevention will be working side by side with the Building Department with regards to any outside restaurant seating and just letting everybody know the Fire Department will be monitoring everything with regards to this whole reopening scheme that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. Real quick on the Chairman's report, actually, we'll thank everybody for the work they did on this, trying to get things opened up again. But I think, not on a bigger scale, but I'd really like to wish Jimmy happy anniversary tonight. Today's his anniversary, 32 wonderful years married to an absolutely spectacular woman. How she did it is beyond any of us. We had talked about this a little bit earlier. I didn't think that she really wanted him to retire. I think she wanted to keep him working. So that's why he does a little part-time stuff just to get him out of the house. But on a clear note, I'd like to say, Jim, congratulations on 32 years. That's a long time.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. And now we'll go to our Town Administrator's report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick items and notes for the board on a couple of projects that are almost finished and ongoing. If you haven't taken a ride down Peach George Road, we replaced 5,000 feet of sidewalk. It goes on for about a mile. So I think that came out really nice. I just wanted to point it out. If you haven't been down there, please take a ride down there. And also, if you drive by the Human Services Building at 61 Center, you'll see that the long-awaited work on the parking lot has begun. So we're really excited about to see both of those projects ongoing as we speak. And also, I never saw Jim ask so many questions at the meeting tonight. I'm not sure what he's got for plans tonight, but we were trying to keep it short for him and he asked, he talked more than anybody. So I just want to remind the board members that we do have a brief executive session after this. So you will have, once we leave this meeting, and please don't leave until we speak the right motion, but you will have an email, updated email for a new meeting that if you could just jump into with us for a few minutes, we would really appreciate it. And, Mr. Chairman, with that, if it's okay to ask Selectmen Tigges to read the motion to put us into executive session?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Paul. Pursuant to General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, "The Board of Selectmen will convene to executive session to discuss legal strategy and litigation in the matter of groundwater contamination. As an open meeting may have a negative effect on the negotiation position of the public body with the Board of Selectmen adjourning directly from the executive session and not reconvening in open session as is authorized by General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21B4." That's my motion.
Wait a second?
Second, second.
We'll need a roll call vote once again. So, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi? Yes. Those 500 are ready. And we will not be coming back to this session, right, Paul?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So at this point, I think we need to, what do we do? Close this?
I'll leave this meeting and then go into your email and look for the new link.
Okay, Paul, just give a two-minute recess, two, three-minute recess, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, fellas. See you shortly.
We're meeting first, right? Need a roll call vote for that? No? Everyone's gone. Bye, everybody.